Before we start, there's something I'd like to share with you. Please note that this meeting is being filmed by a member of the public. Individuals are welcome to film, tweet, record or broadcast this meeting, but must do so with consideration and not be disruptive. If this meeting needs to go into closed session or if a member of the public wishes to speak and has a bona fide reason why their contribution should not be recorded, as chairman, I may then direct all recording in the room to be stopped. Generally, I have no wish to stop recordings and so would normally allow people to record everything except any item taken into closed session. Thank you. Item one on your agenda is apologies for absence. I do have apologies from councillor Darius Stroud.
Chair, I won't be able to set them very much.
Okay. Councillor French. Item two is declaration of community interest and request for dispensation. Members wishing to deter an interest on the agenda can reach dispensations. Yes, councillor Orde?
I'm willing to carry interest on living boxes by the national.
Thank you. Yes, councillor Orde?
I'm willing to carry interest on the item on council matters.
Item three.
Sorry, Chair. Councillor, it's just on that. Are you concerned about property value because of the key loan interest?
Thank you. Item four. Sorry. Minutes of item three, minutes of previous meeting. To approve the minutes of the meeting, cancel the 22nd of July. Yes, councillor Hamlin. Item four. Sorry, I'm sorry. Item four on your agenda is matters arising from the minutes. Do not action taken and any outstanding action from items in the minutes of 22nd of July.
Chair, sorry, I've got to go again, but I was actually recording just getting absent at the meeting. I had my phone, my apologies, sorry, nothing on the answerphone.
We will amend that. Page 129. Item five. Members of the public to speak on planning applications before the commission. If you wish to speak, I'd hope you'll address that more to the far forward meeting. Yes?
Thanks, Chair. Just to confirm, the email I sent to all the councillors regarding the bed hotel just been received.
Yes, it has. Yes, it has been received and read.
Right.
We will have the representatives to turn up for the first planning application for the council.
Yes. Right. I'm looking at Mr. Public.
I will be speaking for all this. So, the name is, Mr. Wilkins.
Right. Item six is carefully proposed the development of egg flats at Lord Down Slade. We're only given our pre-application news on principle of Suffolk County Council Highway recommending that parking be provided on the site despite the location directly adjacent to a car park and facilities in the high street.
Yes, Chair. Some councillors have already expressed their view on this. With not being asked to make an objection or support or anything like that, the applicant simply wishes to know whether or not in principle is subject to seeing an actual planning application. If an application is brought forward that did not include parking because there was sufficient parking called the applicant near our, i.e. in the main car park right opposite down Slade, would the council be likely to demand it to be happy with such a proposal or would likely be reminded to object to such a proposal?
Councillor French.
Yeah, you're not on that. If indeed they were there without supplying problems, that's going to make it a parking in the outside car park. Is there any way that we could ask the Borough Council if they would all have the parking for it? Because I feel that just like an extra penalty for living in that area, that would pay for 24-hour parking.
This is a bank road which is a used refurbishment shop, yeah? Surely that is such an old part of the town, it should be left. If ever, if ever anybody could get this traffic inhaled or sort out, surely that would be a good route to come through if the high street was ever, what, 20 million people came through there. You need that road. Surely got the houses and the old flats, it's not a place to be. I thought because that would come straight on the road.
What happened last time was that the county council maintained the provision of onsite parking would be necessary for development. The highest consulting confirmed the provision would not unjuicy affect pedestrian highway safety. Whilst the planning application was not refused on these grounds, it was clear, according to the applicant anyway, it was clear that it remains a principle concerning the Borough Council and the town council raised concerns on this point. And the last time round, the Borough and the town were concerned about the dangers of traffic emerging from this to that, imagine that corner.
Yeah. I mean, if at a later stage they wanted to put a road through the pool, that would be an ideal route. If you start building one, that's another problem. We haven't got very many labels as it is. And we might find road because of dead end is a wrap around that, that's the way you move.
It wouldn't be blocking the road, the building is outside of that.
I know, it wouldn't be on the road, but it would be right next to it. I think that'd be very sweet to do today.
Anybody else wish to change?
I just want to make a comment on how this is going to go.
So, in a sense, we are.
I'm against it.
You're against it.
So, actually, just in principle, against the idea of the application.
That's the issue, Chair. We're talking about the application, it's about the application. This is about whether we would consent to it without. I would suggest that that's exactly what we were trying to achieve the last time. We moved to this.
I suppose councillor French is for it, possibly.
There needs to be some provision for parking elsewhere.
Yes.
I think we were arguing last time that they were going to be single first time or affordable housing, which was short on it. So, I think we were lying, thought that there was parking underneath the houses in effect and then backing onto the road and it's been. So, some sort of, you know, on that watch, there could be a bit of waste money used for a bit of car parking for town hall on that stretch. I think there could be something, that all would be a hope to see in that case. Chair, I have been remiss.
Councillor Smith, sorry.
I have been remiss. I should have actually declared an interest on this particular application as I remember the debate we had with the town board and the performance in truth. But I don't have the right to speak immediately.
Councillor Turner.
Yes, if I remember this application right, when we objected to it the first and the second time, the problem was that they were wanting to have the access to the parking in such a way that there wasn't any possibility that somebody coming in to attend to the car park or leaving the car park could spot a vehicle coming out and a vehicle coming out couldn't see if there was any traffic coming. So, the whole discussion was around the safety, not only of the residents, because we've got the people using the car park as well. If they're planning to do the same development, and usually as a committee, we welcome development in the town because it brings money and people and the other good things and we certainly need the source of housing to have this thing. I think if they're planning to do it without necessarily putting vehicular access on the site and are looking for alternative parking, of which there's plenty around the centre of town, I don't think we should have a problem with that at all. But as councillor French said, I think it should be made very clear what elements the tenants or owners of that property would be expected to do when it comes to parking provision, not only in terms of where they're supposed to park, but also the security of their vehicles. Nobody here would sensibly leave their car in a public car park overnight. So, there needs to be some considerations to what people would want to do in planning. And I think they haven't answered that yet.
No, you're right, they haven't. Because the application was refused initially on grounds of development that affected the amenities of the areas. And previous meetings, there was considerable debate called at office from council level on issues of access, parking, residents and highway safety. So, they were the entities that we refused it on initially. And I think your points are very well made about the parking and the residents are.
Okay, I can see that.
Thank you. Applications currently before some evidence, councillor. Yeah, a bit of a. We found it in a minute. Yeah. Item one on list B is an outline application of construction of up to nine dwellings with associated garages and park areas of the 21 master board. Mr. Wilkins.
Am I okay to look here or?
Yes, you're fine.
Well, basically, I'll be speaking on behalf of the residents of Punchy Road, Ashley Close and Beaumont Way up with regards to the proposed development submitted by Mr. Dobson to build up to nine houses. We, as a community, find the proposed development overbearing, out of scale and feel that it would have a disastrous effect on existing residents and be of no benefit to Haverhill Town as a whole. This small greenfield site is not included in the Haverhill Vision 2031 and on these grounds, as well as others, the proposal should subsequently thrown out to the planning committee. The proposed development will totally destroy the very special and unique character of Punchy Road that current and future generations should be able to enjoy in its current state. It will utterly devastate the quiet to which we are all accustomed and upon which we place great value. Punchy Road is a busy, narrow road servicing industrial estate and is especially busy during the day with frequent heavy goods vehicles entering and exiting Holland Road. However, behind existing houses and bungalows that all face the road are large, quiet gardens that are at present not overlooked. These gardens are where residents are able to enjoy the local wildlife and privacy in an area that has remained largely unchanged for over 100 years. This small stretch of houses is surrounded by wildlife areas as indicated in the maps in the Haverhill Vision 2031 documents. The proposed development site provides a wildlife corridor and is a home for an established breeding pair of farmers. There are also pimstraw bats, grasshogs, slow worms and newts, all of which are found within neighbouring gardens. Furthermore, in the garden of Flint Cottage, there are numerous mature trees that provide homes and shelter for many species of birds. This proposed development would have dramatic effect on many species, some of which are protected, endangered and will have negative and disastrous impact on the local ecology as a whole. Within the planning application, it is also stated that this area is not a flood risk. This is most certainly not true. Behind the gardens of 17 to 37 Punchy Road is the Angling Water Attenuation Lake. That is a constant threat because it is prone to malfunctioning due to the increased amount of rain runoff, which far exceeds what this attenuation lake was originally designed to deal with. When the, excuse me, when the attenuation lake malfunctions, the flooding comes up the gardens of number 17 and 19, some 150 feet and is a metre deep in most places. The garden of Flint Cottage has been built up at the end of the site but does not entirely escape the flooding, but goes largely unnoticed as the south-eastern extremity of this site is overgrown with rough vegetation. And indecently, in the recent purchase of Riverton, number 23 Punchy Road, potential flood risk in this area was highlighted by the surveyors. The development of the garden of Flint Cottage will create even more water runoff into a flood park and already cannot cope with the present volumes. This, of course, will mean increased flooding risk for number 17 and 19 and indeed the proposed development site. The proposed plan has an access road to be placed where there is covered in a garage adjacent Flint Cottage. This proposed access road runs within 1.5 metres of the neighbouring bungalow and is absolutely intolerable. The residents of this bungalow will have pedestrians, riders and passengers looking straight into their bedroom and bathroom. Also, during the hours of dark, these vehicle headlights will be dim directly into these windows. The visibility from the proposed access road is poor and Punchy Road is a very busy road. This will create a dangerous junction that will compromise highway safety for all the users of Punchy Road. The addition of nine new houses will also result in 27 new wheelie bins as the proposed access road does not allow sufficient space for large vehicles to turn. It is likely that these bins will need to be collected curbside. This will create even more potential hazards and blocking the sideline of drivers exiting the access road and neighbouring driveways on a weekly basis. On the proposed development plans, there are four times two-bedroom use cottages, each with a single designated parking space. There are also five times three-bedroom detached, semi-detached properties, each with a single garage and six allocated visitor parking spaces. With today's national statistics allowing for two cars per two-bedroom property and up to three cars for a three-bedroom house, this does not compensate for it. And in addition, a recent AA survey suggests that only 86% of garages are used for general storage, not for accommodating the family car. One option is, of course, to park on Punchy Road. However, on such a busy road, this is likely to cause major disruption and would be a disaster waiting to happen. It is therefore perhaps more probable that these extra cars will be parked in Beaumont Way and Ashley Close, which could create serious difficulties for the local residents that live there. As previously mentioned, the residents of Punchy Road enjoy large peaceful gardens full of birdsong and wildlife that provide tranquil escape from the busy road. These gardens offer privacy and shelter for existing residents. None of these gardens are currently overlooked as all of the current properties face the road. However, this proposal will see five houses within close proximity to boundary of number 19 and houses within metres of the boundaries of 23 and 25. And this proposed development will overlook number 17, 19, 23, 25 and 27. The new houses would look directly into the windows of gardens of all these existing properties. This, again, is intolerable. In addition, the noise, light, pollution, loss of natural light and the effect on the privacy of the existing residents will again be unbearable. Furthermore, Thistle Down, number 25 Punchy Road, is a registered care home for young autistic people. The site for this home, which is annexed to Barnadist and Call Proprieties School, was chosen specifically for the quietude of the site. The disruption that will be caused by the building works alone will have a disastrous effect on the wellbeing of these vulnerable young people. The proposed development should therefore be rejected on this basis and as it would cause a detrimental effect on the residents of Thistle Down. This proposed greenfield site is not included within the Haverhill 2013 visual. The site is estimated to be 0.2 hectares in size and when taken into account the scrap maximum density of 30 homes per hectare, this equates to 45 homes per hectare. It is obvious that the proposed development is prosperous, overbearing and out of scale of the local area. Therefore, in summary, the proposal would create an increased flood risk, compromise highway safety, create disturbance and nuisance, especially to neighbouring properties, promote dangerous parking in and around Punchy Road and generate unacceptable noise and light pollution, destroy the privacy of rear gardens of neighbouring properties and reduce natural daylight. It would also create problems with curbside refuse collection services for the new development and it will destroy the habitat of wildlife, including that rare species and the rich biodiversity of the area. We therefore request the town council and planning department to reject this planning application outright.
Oh, God. Pick that bloody thing up, it's just, oh, bloody thing is. He's got the nutter.
Sorry, there are boy in Liverpool, I've got a mouth, right?
Councillor Turner.
I've got two things to comment in response to your well put together statement. So, the first one is to make extremely clear the Haverhill Town Council as a planning committee is a statutory consultant on all planning matters, but the planning authority is, there is a maintenance, the Borough, okay? So, we don't have the realty to throw it out or keep it in. We're a consultant, right? We're a statutory consultant, which is, basically, we get to have the same statement as if your neighbour was going to build something and you have the right to say whether you have something to object on. So, the only thing we can do is support or raise our own objections. So, my proposal, which is the second in all that, is that we were presented with, I think, a misleading statement about what was going to be the development on the site. We were led to believe it might be a barn type dwellings in keeping with the area. That's clearly not being the case. My proposal is that we support the statement of objection that the residents have presented and secondly, that we raise our own objections. It's not in keeping with the area and it's certainly an overdevelopment of the site. And it's not in line with the original suggestion that was put our way when the outline planning permission was put before this committee.
Councillor Orde.
I agree with them, I think the general.
Councillor French.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Once again, I do have an interest on this matter, but.
Did you say you had an interest?
Yeah, only in fact by being a member of the Development Patrol Committee over at Gerson Hens. So, this will be coming for Development Patrol at Gerson Hens and I should be looking at it very much in detail before that meeting comes on. The question I would like to ask at the moment, what is the definition of that particular land around there at the moment? Was it designation? Is it green space? It doesn't have any binding residential. It looks, I mean, which surprises me because I would have thought that that would be the first thing that ever was asked for would be changing designation of land. And there's no mention of it here. But certainly looking at the law at the moment, I mean, that is, to me, that overdeveloped on quite a massive scale. You know, if you were to continue that along the whole of Punchy Road, it would be a tenement. So, remember, even supposing that the Borough Council had minded passing, I would definitely want one of those taken out of the equation. The other ones, they look to be, as if they're going to be quite substantial, they're pleased. And I think that the effect it gave in the hand of the community is going to be substantial. You know, so, once I see the detailed document should come forward, then I will be looking at it with a greater interest.
Thank you. Councillor Hamlin.
Yeah, I think firstly, we should reject the whole lot. Because looking at the photos and the objections, especially from number 19 as well, the flooding, the present time, the way it's going now, the rain that we get and obviously it looks like what we're going to get in the future, that's going to be the norm flooding and this is going to increase it by enormous amount. Even if you put one or two houses on there, I think that that would be an objection with flooding. The flooding would be absolutely enormous. And also, the way that they come out into the Punchy Road, well, that road is, as I said, very, very busy road and it's very thin as well, very, very thin road because it's the main road to the bypass and it's the main road to Stansey if you go the back way as well. So, as I say, a 45 per hectare is enormous amount of houses. So, it's, I'm definitely objecting to that.
Councillor Orde.
I think we should concentrate here on the planning issues. The planning issues are that it is overdevelopment, it's clearly far too much for that area. There are issues surrounding contamination, there are clearly some concerns to be addressed in terms of flooding and the access in front is is clearly inadequately sized and bound in the process. This is clearly out of keeping with the area and the damage to the security of that area. We should reject it outright.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to make a comment? Before I might want to ask as well if you were to read through the objections and you're going to be forward.
It'd be quicker to do that than once you haven't.
All right.
Overlooking, overbearing, out of scale, well, the character of it is out of bounds, of course. The concern over road safety, flooding, parking, noise, Mr. Wiggins' fossil privacy. Contamination is mentioned as well. There's also concern for wildlife corridor protector species for the form. And I think we have a proposal from councillor Turner, standing by councillor Roach.
Do we have a proposal? Do we have a second?
Well, I apologize there. We reject that out and with all them objections as well.
Yeah, what I personally was that we support the objection that's raised by the tenants, which is diverse, pardon. And the second part is this will be objection on our own grounds on the fact that as we'd stated, all of these councils are on the same page, which is a clear summary of the planning objection. I think to add as a comment, the original outline planning permission that was presented to us, which was for a barn like or something of that nature, dwells. If that had been put before us, I'm very sure that the discussion here to that would have been very different. I don't think so.
Right. So, that is your proposal, I think. So, we're all doing that, that is how the objections are being dealt with. Thank you.
May I make my further statement? Because we're a statutory consultant, the only thing that we can object on, no matter how we feel about things, is something which contravenes clearly the planning framework that we have to work to. So, we've all had training on what the planning framework guides us on and we have quite clear guidance on what we can and cannot say. If we have a strong opinion about something, if it's not contravening anything in planning, we can only pass a comment, we can't object. Just to make that clear, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all ever. Now, Mr. Public, you're very welcome to stay and this is the rest of the day of the meeting if you wished to or if you would like to leave the task at hand. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is item two, which is variations of condition three and 25 of planning permission. This is Westfield Primary, Chelston Way, environmental assessment.
Yes, you see, the research establishment have figured out environmental assessment methods and there were conditions placed on the planning permission and they're asking for two of those conditions relating to the environmental assessment to be removed on the basis that they can't pass the law sufficiently to get that point. So, what technical do others intend to do now?
Councillor Orde.
Chair, first of all, can I say that the website didn't have the company letter that should have been there, so it explains why it can't be made as good as it was. And just to remind you what the conditions were that were imposed. Condition three was that the development here by a committee should be constructed to improve or subsequent equivalent quality shirts in over good excellent standard. The reason for that was to ensure the local man's sustainable design and local environmental standards criteria in accordance with regional planning policies. Condition 25 required that within 12 months of the completion of building a room post obstruction status assessment and a latest certification from vermin briefs down has been achieved shall be submitted to council planning authority. It then goes on to say significantly, should the levels of energy usage and carbon saving set out in the vision had avoided not be achieved, a strategy corrected by the levels of energy usage and carbon reduction, including the details of any necessary mechanisms in place, shall be submitted to a group like council planning authority. It would appear to me that the constructors and responsible people here have failed to make any attempt to address the room deficiencies. In those circumstances, we should be advised why it's impossible to reach the specifications. And if the reason for that is merely cost, then we need to be not allowing the conditions to be adjusted. to be adjusted just to make development cheaper, whoever it is, whether it's developer or whatever.
Anybody else wish to make any comment?
Support that.
Support, yeah, support that, thank you.
We are objecting to various...
Yes, in the absence of information.
In the absence of information, yes.
I think they disagree with their statement, too.
Right. Moving on to item three, this is a conversion and extension of a public housing facility to accommodate a one retail unit and 11 residential units, five one bedroom flats and six two bedroom flats with associated parking and landscaping. And Mr Sam Bird is the applicant. All councillors have received a written objection to Mr John Brown's report on that. Yes, Counselor, you did?
I agree with this 100% and I agree 100% of what John said and I object to it totally because everything there is spacked. The overall model, that bar believed to be on the front should be listed for the board. Apparently you want to change all that. Really, that shouldn't be changed, that is a reasonable point.
Did it, Mr?
Definitely. That is the original, that might be the original from much earlier.
Yeah, Christmas, wasn't it? Yeah, Counselor French.
It isn't that because the rest of this building entirely not just front vision and it also sits within conservation area.
We haven't seen this to be considered as a regulation.
No, we haven't.
It's not, it's not.
Right. Yes. Counselor Andre.
Chair, I think the question about this, it doesn't appear to be listed, we made the title of the copy, it doesn't appear to be listed. But, as a pub, it seems to be possible, it seems to be manageable. Clearly, we need to look at how the high street is affected by its existing dereliction. If it becomes a shop, that's not substantially outkeeping where it is. The accommodation, the size of premises is so large that it would be impractical to regard it as purely retail prices and there is a demand for in town housing. If this will provide affordable in town, that's the target. My main concern has got to be traffic. We cannot cope with more traffic for residents who build onto the high street and the best is planned substantially rights to allow access from the alternative. It's impractical in terms of traffic. But in terms of the principle of converting apart piece of shop, that's entirely consistent with what we're trying to do on the high street and I can persuade you that this is a listed building.
Right, okay. Counselor Hammond.
Yeah, I don't, I somewhere see on the site there that there was another application that went to the offices where there was rear access across from Erinhausen Mall, Lordship Lane, into, across the building and bridge into the access that way and it's a much bigger proposal and that got turned down by the offices. And I see it somewhere, but for goodness sake, I don't know where I see it, but I did see it originally. So, there has been contemplation on this and I fully agree with Counselor Andre because you're talking about potentially 22 cars going up the high street because once they go into that place, they will have to come out and go all the way up the high street. On a Saturday as well, you're talking about no access at all because you've got the market there. So, you know, it's ridiculous, it's absolutely stupid to the officers to agree with this when they turn down the proposal to have rear access going over the bridge. It's crazy, I don't know why they agree with it. And also, the shop that they proposed is a small shop, which, you know, really, a small shop, we don't knock in Hayley Hill really, we've got a lot of small shops in Hayley Hill that are not being lent.
They can just...
So, we want, and they could build a much larger shop there, there's no doubt about that. They could come out, you know, as well, and they could go back. So, it could be a much larger shop there. And obviously, because they want this to be built and they want access, it means it's going to be a smaller shop. So, really, I object on the grounds of the access and shop, the shop is too small for what we want in Hayley Hill.
Thank you, Counselor Hammond. Counselor Roberts.
Just to reiterate, what Counselor Hammond said, I mean, how can they have it if the road is shut on a one way system? That, you get in and out, what happens, oh, you've got a friend of this, a patient, I hear that people would have needed to be in there, but there's single people who are going through a road, there's single people, it's not going far, I mean, up all the street. It's just ridiculous, we suggested going that way. And what about the 3.30 plans, is there not something to kind of cross that line?
Yes, there is.
So, it's, what, what could something, when it might...
Counselor Turner.
So, without wanting to put all the detract from what was being said, while we're tied to it, I think that if the substantial part of what was the Bell Hotel, it contains a lot of history of the town, is removed, I think that overall the town loses something. We've already got the Paul Arthur Cornet Exchange called the Bartlett, it's at the grade and we've got Gertie's Building that he's going to open up and convert to retail to fall roses and that. I think if we keep on losing the character of our old block in town, I think the whole town is losing something. So, I think it would be, it would be a shame to lose the face of the, the kind of buildings that we have. And I think we should object, certainly on the grounds, which the other councillors have already mentioned, that the access, particularly on the market days and others, is going to be a pain. And I think that regardless of all of that, we don't want to see yet another classic building of the town disappear. I'd like to see something like they did at John Lewis at the Grand Arcade, where they keep at least the facade to keep the appearance up. And they're not going to do that if they make this access work.
Counselor Woodham.
I'm troubled by this as well. I had a look at the site today and it is feasible to get access in the last car park if they were to mine to. And they could have a half way in there with the flats above, so we wouldn't lose any amount of life that they could put in. Item, well, Counselor Hammond, the fact that the shop should be much bigger, we need some big shops in the town, otherwise we won't get any of the companies coming in.
Not the car or something in there.
Yeah, but you know what I'm saying. And like Counselor Turner, I think it would be a shame if the facade of the, one of the few old buildings...
Remedy, remedy.
Yeah, is destroyed. Otherwise, it would be much more bear 1960s concrete town.
We're heading, we're heading that direction already. Anybody else wish to make any further comment?
Counselor Tom, consideration to this development is actually the personal shopping area of Hayley Hill and the Borough Policy TCL2 is there to protect from loss of the vitality of retail and shopping characters by having non retail development, it's been a very brutal trajectory that's in the way. And the bed is very clearly marked out as part of that protected area, where the major thrust should be towards retail, as has been mentioned, which will not want very small public to retail, professional presentation.
So, to summarise, it's item big, they're not meeting item big.
That it possibly not a detriment of the vitality and viability of the local shopping centre. Counselor Roach.
It just seems that we've got yet to get another developer that's trying to get very flats into a smaller area as possible. So, you have any consultation, any build for the area that one's building in. Yes, at least, one of the builders might have said, hand back and said, ask a question, what would we be liable to accept? And obviously, this is a pattern that they thought, what's the new way?
So, I think we're, the commissary are in agreement that we oppose this and you have got all the various reasons, primary opposes it.
We should check that on the state of that, though. It is going to listen, but I wouldn't say that.
We can, we can also check that.
I don't think it's a consignment, then.
Right, moving on, item four on your agenda, and this is on list C. Did you find that?
I haven't seen it, sir.
Counselor Roberts, have you got it, C? You can share one more. Okay, right. Right, item, item, item four is the GPO three tree preservation order application. Sycamore, remove one lower limb that extends over garden, Find Maple Fair, and this is in 77 Tudor Close.
We have no tree officer report for this application, all thanks.
So, therefore, I think we should wait for our report from the tree officer when we have it.
Sycamore should be checked by me, so.
Well, they're, well, they're the meat of the tree family, aren't they? They're the meat of the tree family, yeah. As we don't have a report from the tree officer, I think it applies to the management under the...
Especially on these.
Well, yes, it has been requested already.
Especially in my, my...
The maple, yeah.
Yeah, well, we need more.
Yeah, that's what we want to have.
Can I suggest that we agree to the Sycamore being threatened because we've got that objection.
No problem with that.
It's the field maple that we've got, obviously.
Good for them, I think, so.
If I go back and ask that makes you firm decision on the field maple, as we've not been able to see the tree officer reports, it's not getting done. This is, the planning applications, we should ask, I believe, in July and they still want a tree officer report, so our time is running out.
Okay, yeah. And that applies both to item four and five, which are the horse chestments and there are, there's a maple there as well and Silver Birch and various others. I suppose that we wait for the report, which has been requested from both of us.
Shall I suggest that we object until the tree officer's report comes in?
Yeah. Four and five?
Otherwise, we just do it.
Right. Item six is a planning application, direction of a single storey front and rear extension, and this is 67 pounds, this is quite a small extension.
It's been announced, so, beyond the car park, please.
We can concentrate on that, please, in your brain.
Let me make a check.
No, no objection?
No, probably.
But, on the going, the, sorry, we've submitted a material to you, I'm just so busy acting to that.
You just want to go home.
Sorry, sorry, my apologies. Item seven, preserved matters application, submission of detail under an OPP, the appearance landscaping layout and scale of direction of one number chat related, and this is Boynton Woods and Locking the Day project.
You didn't have an objection at all to the last application, and the result was some matters were reserved at all, but to submit three times.
Yeah. Yes. No objections? Okay. Yes, it was on the order, each of them, yeah. Item eight, screen fending provision newer for cost of carpet, 23 High Street, this is a renewal to allow the existing, this is a renewal to allow the existing used to continue.
I can't hear what the office says, a cost of carpet, can't hear it.
Yes, I should as well. Yes, I'm looking for your non, sorry.
Yeah, no, no, no problem, no problem.
Great. Now, we can go on to that, concludes. Item eight is matters to report whenever we exchange any urgent planning matters. Yes, Counselor Woodham?
I've been monitoring the St Evansbury website for the planning applications and it just got to the first of all of us on there. It's absolutely disgraceful that it's taken them two or three weeks after the application goes in before it goes on the website.
Yes, it has slid through the...
It takes them two or three weeks?
No. Counselor French.
Yeah, I do want to make a point with the brother outside, Gertie's and Melba and the councillor, the state there, can we do something, send it out or something to the county council and ask them to get it? Can you get that there and get it going?
I think it's due to be resurfaced towards the end of this month, if I'm, I'm looking at Counselor Brown and not in the affirmative. Yes.
That's what I was told. It's due, I've done it a couple of weeks ago, but it doesn't matter, they're all up now anyway.
Yeah, they're utilities.
Yeah, exactly.
So, I shan't hold my breath then?
No, I won't.
Like, I completely agree with you, Counselor French, it is an absolutely disgusting statement. Anybody else?
Chair.
Yes, Counselor Hammond.
Yeah, I think it's Counselor Woodham that wrote for that, wrote for that part about the, trying to get Hayley Hill to perish, bring it in line with all the new developments that's going to take place over there, which is north west and north east, and also, I think he was saying about the science park area and things like that. And I just wondered if the park is sort of, if he's going to apply for that or is he going to bring it to the full council?
I was planning to bring it to full council, but having that going ahead, it would be for the Borough Council to sort of view the boundaries as far as patches and things like that. But if you were talking about the Ross Strang County area, then that would be a contribution. But I'll be doing that to full council.
Anybody else? Mission is now closed, thank you very much, Mr Public.